I would like to call the city council meeting of February the 3rd, 2015, to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer, Latour.
President.
Long, Gray.
Present.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon, Petty, Tennant.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is that of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everyone. We will start with the consent agenda tonight. Number one, approval of the January 20th, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution to authorize the purchase of one Chevrolet Equinox from Chevrolet of Fayetteville in the amount of $20,247 pursuant to a state procurement contract used by the Parking Management Division. Number three, resolution to authorize the purchase of one Toyota Prius from Toyota of Fayetteville in the amount of $22,627 pursuant to a state procurement contract used by the Building Safety Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number four, resolution to authorize the purchase of one 2015 Ford F-250 from Lewis Ford of Fayetteville, Arkansas, in the amount of $22,427 pursuant to a state procurement contract used by the Animal Services Division. Number five, resolution to authorize the purchase of one 2015 Chevrolet Equinox, all-wheel-drive from Chevrolet of Fayetteville, in the amount of $21,699 pursuant to a state procurement contract used by the Utilities Director and to approve budget adjustment. Number six, Landers Dodge of Benton, a resolution to authorize the purchase of one 2015 Dodge Ram 1500 4x4 pickup truck from Landers Dodge of Benton, Arkansas, in the amount of $20,193 pursuant to a state procurement contract for use by the Water and Sewer Division. Number seven, a resolution to approve the purchase of one 2015 Dodge Ram 1500 pickup truck from Landers Dodge of Benton, Arkansas, in the amount of $20,367 pursuant to a state procurement contract for use by the Police Department and to approve budget adjustment. Number eight, a resolution to authorize the purchase of a Bandit Chipper shredder from Hennered Utility Products in the amount of $32,522.25 plus applicable taxes pursuant to the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for use by the Parks and Recreation Department and Transportation Division. Number nine, a resolution to approve the purchase of one 2015 non-motor pool replacement vehicle from Bale Chevrolet in the amount of $32,371 with options pursuant to a state procurement contract used by the Police Department and to approve budget adjustment. Number 10, Washington County Jail Services Interlocal Agreement Amendment, a resolution approving an amendment to the Jail Services Interlocal Agreement with Washington County, Arkansas, continuing fees at $60 per booked prisoner for calendar year 2015. Number 11, a resolution to express the willingness of the City of Fayetteville to utilize federal aid funds for the construction of the St. Street Connection from North Front Street to Fannie's Boulevard. Number 12, a resolution to approve an agreement with Southwestern Electric Power Company to participate in the energy efficiency rebate program in total amount of $4,967.3 and to approve budget adjustment. Number 13, resolution to approve utility work agreement with SWEPCO of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for utility relocations as part of the Highway 112 widening project between Razorback Road and Garland Avenue with the amount to be paid by the City of Fayetteville not to exceed $91,878.59. Number 14, a resolution to approve contract grant Thornton LLP in the amount of $87,500 to provide independent audit services to the City of Fayetteville. And number 15, resolution to designate approximately 14.2 acres of city property as training grounds for the Fayetteville Fire Department. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to accept the consent agenda is read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Kenyon.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Is that enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just checking. All right, under unfinished business, number one, an ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4864 for approximately .26 acres located at 332 West Ash Street from RSF4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RMF24 Residential Multi-Family, 24 units per acre. I will entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4864 for approximately a quarter acre located at 232 West Ash from RSF4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RMF24 Residential Multi-Family, 24 units per acre.
Jeremy, anything?
This item was left on the second reading at the request of the applicant last meeting. Just a brief reminder of the application. The location is at 232 West Ash Street, which is mid-block between Gregg Avenue and Woolsey Avenue. It's about a quarter acre. There's an existing single-family home on the property dating back to the 1950s. Their existing zoning district is RSF4. Neighborhood to the east is all RSF4, single-family and two-family residential. To the west is Gregg Avenue, which is a four-lane minor arterial street and some multifamily. Their request here is to rezone this property to RMF24 to match property that the same family owns to the west, the RMF24 zoning district. This is about a quarter acre, and the intent here is to add some dwelling units. I think the request at the last time we discussed this was how many dwelling units could be added. .26 acres at RMF24 technically could allow up to six dwelling units on the property. If you combine that with the property that the family owns to the west, the total property could entertain up to 17 total dwelling units if it were redeveloped in its entirety. Staff in the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of the rezoning at this time.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay, would the applicant like to say anything?
Hi, Egan.
I'm Terry Parker with Parker &amp; Associates. I just wanted to reiterate what we said before. I think what we're proposing will definitely fit in with the neighborhood and really be an enhancement. We're proposing to keep the existing single-family house that faces Ash Street, and that would act as a screen to the multifamily behind there, and I think that's good for the neighborhood. And we also have the possibility of routing our traffic in from Gregg Street to this property across the land that the family owns, the same property, so that would help alleviate some of the traffic concerns. Anything else, or if you have any questions?
That was pretty much it. I mean, we were -- we plan on...
Would you step just a little bit closer to the mic?
This is -- this part's weird for me, talking to the microphone. But we plan on routing the traffic off of...
Can I get you to introduce yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Taylor Koutrubes, and I own this property here on Ash Street and the adjoining properties. There's two to the left of it, if you're facing the house. So what we plan to do is build a small triplex behind this house and then route, make the entrance to it from our current apartment building off of Gregg Street. When we talked with Quinn Thompson at the Planning Commission office, he told us that you could only put three units back there with the RMF24 zoning due to the city's requirements for parking, green spaces, and water management. And so we thought that this would actually fit in pretty nicely with the neighborhood. And if you're coming off of Gregg Street, there are 16 units there, two townhome buildings beside each other. On the right-hand side, there is another large property zoned RMF24 that's being developed. And behind that is another apartment complex, and so then you have our house across the street from there with this lot behind it. And so we think that, you know, that's the transition on the other side of the street. Why can't we do that on our side of the street? When we first came up with this idea to build this back behind the little house, I never thought that zoning would be an issue just because it already matches everything that's already there. And this house that we fixed and the front of the lot was abandoned. I mean, it was overgrown and really beat up, and we completely -- my husband and I rebuilt that by hand, so the area already looks better. And I think by building this triplex behind the house, you won't be able to see it from the neighborhood, from Ash Street, but it will increase everyone's property values, which is great for this older neighborhood. I don't think it's a good idea to really, like, redline off this property or this neighborhood and not allow improvements. I think that if we build on this land, it would help everyone out. And we've already planned with the money that we get to build the building back there, we're going to also improve the apartment buildings that face Gregg, which are basically the entrance to the backside of this neighborhood, so it'll make the whole area look a lot nicer. I know there was concern also before that if we sell the property, that someone could come through and bulldoze everything we've built and then build something larger, which might not fit in with the neighborhood, but as a Greek family, we don't sell any properties, so you don't have to worry about that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
When I look at this map, just to clarify, the entrance is going to -- if I'm renting one of those triplexes, do I, on Gregg, turn into the first apartment driveway or the second, and is that going to connect back there?
So are you looking at the two townhome buildings there?
Yes.
Okay, so right between those buildings is a large space, a green space, and that would be the area where the driveway would go. We would just, I guess if the building that borders Ash Street, you would probably enter through that parking lot and go through. And we've measured and made sure that that driveway complies with the city's requirements. You have to have two cars be able to go at the same time and have a little bit of extra space, basically, and that does comply. And the concrete goes almost -- it goes almost all the way to the building already, so we would just, we talked with our concrete guy, and we just continue that into the new parking lot.
Okay.
And then as far as the house on Ash Street, we're going to build a privacy fence behind that house and give them a little yard, and so if you were driving down Ash, you wouldn't see into this backyard.
I see, okay.
It would just look like a normal house.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the council? Yes, Al?
I was just curious to clarify, when you said they would enter through the parking lot of the townhouse complex closest to Ash, would they enter through the actual parking lot, or would there be another curb cut under Gregg?
They would use the current curb cut.
The same one?
The same one. It would go actually almost direct, it's like almost a straight line from the curb cut off of Gregg, straight into the backyard there for the land.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Yes, John?
Taylor, I don't suppose your crystal ball works any better than mine, but if we were not to grant you this zoning, rezoning of this property, what do you think will happen to this property?
We plan to leave it the same. We use the front house as a rental property, so we would continue renting that home. And then we also talked with the city, with the zoning board, and they said that we could get a special permit to build a duplex there, so I think maybe down the line, we would build a duplex, because it just, it feels like a lot of land to waste there. There's a huge yard, and we'd like to, you know, use it for something. So if we did not get this zoning, I guess in the future, we'd work to do something else there.
I have a follow-up question. Would you describe this section of Gregg Street as a quiet, single-family neighborhood sort of avenue?
As I mentioned before, I think it's kind of a mix. On Gregg, it's not. There's apartment buildings, there's a huge complex, just a block up towards Sycamore on Gregg, there's our townhomes, and then if you continue north, it's all apartments on Gregg. If you go into this neighborhood down Ash Street, it slowly transitions from, there's a few townhomes, and then there's duplexes, and then it gets to single-family. But if you look at a plot map showing the owners of those properties, you can tell they're all rentals. The duplex next to us is obviously rented. There's on Woolsey, there's four properties owned by J.R. Ball, behind our house, there's one owned by J.R. Ball. Every single home on our street is owned by an LLC or a rental, minus one half of that duplex. And the majority of the homes on Woolsey are rented as well. So, well, I think when this neighborhood was created or developed, maybe in the 70s or so, it was designed as a single-family, small family residential neighborhood. I think now it's turning into, even though they're single-family homes, it's more rental-minded as the school's growing and people are kind of invading that area.
Thank you, Taylor.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there any other questions? All right, thank you all. Is there any public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, I should note that there's been no bill of assurance offered here. The statements about what they would do with the zoning are totally unenforceable, and really, the city council should not rely upon that. Certainly, their description of the neighborhood, you can look at that to see if it's compatible to that, but really, we probably went much more into depth in something like this than what we should have in any zoning decision, because once the zoning decision has been made, then they can do whatever they want to that the zoning would allow them, and whether they enter from an apartment parking lot or something else, that's beyond our control. And it's something that, once they have the zoning decision, that they can go forward and without any bill of assurance, there's nothing else that really you need to consider. It's just whether this is the proper zoning for that parcel.
Jeremy, would you explain to us again why the staff did not support this project?
I'm sorry?
Would you explain to me again why the staff did not support this project?
I think the discussion about the transition is the real issue for staff, and I think what was probably the crux of some of the Planning Commission discussion, although they got more into traffic, I think, more than staff was concerned about, primarily because we feel like it's relatively close to Gregg Avenue, which is a traveled street. Honestly, one of the concerns about development, providing more access under Gregg without a turn lane, actually could become an issue backing cars up trying to turn left into the side, so it's something we just have to review as part of any development application. But the applicant's correct. I mean, I think there is a transition right along Gregg Avenue that is definitely multifamily and even industrial across the street. Over 50% of Fayetteville residents are rental, and so that's not a surprise. That doesn't surprise us at all. There are a number of properties owned by LLCs in all of our neighborhoods, so I think really you have to look at the context of the neighborhood and understand kind of what the, walking around that space, walking around the blocks there, driving through the blocks there, kind of what the transition is. As Mr. Williams mentioned, I think, and the applicants mentioned, I think they have every intent to do exactly what they say. 50 years down the road, the zoning still prevails. As we've seen properties develop that were zoned 30 and 40 years ago along College Avenue that we really wish weren't zoned that way, but that decision was made, and we can't change that at this time. So I think that's our concern, is just looking at these on a case-by-case basis and adding the ability to have a larger apartment complex in this close proximity to the neighborhood simply was concerning to us.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Am I allowed to comment again?
I'm going to allow it. I usually don't, but I will allow this.
Okay, well, as Mr. Pate stated before, if we did demolish everything and rebuild, the zoning, combining the lots, would allow for 17 units, but there's already 16 there, so I don't think it's that much of a change if you include all our property there.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Yes, Mark?
This is in Ward 2, and I've been contacted by individuals in the Woodland neighborhood, and they don't support this. I didn't get anyone calling me that did support it in the neighborhood. There is a concern with the neighborhood and the individuals that I talked to about the encroachment of multifamily and rentals into the neighborhood. This is probably an area where I get the most complaints with over, with single-family homes that perhaps may have more individuals living in them because of the rental situation. Immediately across the street is a historic home that was relocated onto Ash because it is a relatively quiet entrance into the neighborhood. The other issue that has been pointed out to me is, again, the traffic concerns of going from Gregg into the project and the fact that it would add more congestion, especially if someone were turning in to the left from the north, and they also, they think that there's already situations of concern there because of the way the topography is and the, I guess you're going up a hill if you're heading south. So I can't support this. I support what the staff said. Based on the information from the staff, this does offer a buffer into a traditional single-family neighborhood that feels like that they're being a little bit pressured with development and with rentals, and they hope to see the preservation of single-family homes in order to protect the integrity of the single-family neighborhood as it's currently established. So I just wanted to mention that because I have been contacted with a great deal of concern with people throughout the Woodland neighborhood as this encroachment starts into the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, council, what are the thoughts we got here? John?
With all due respect, Mayor, I have a great deal of respect for property owner rights, and I think a property owner will do what's best for his or her property. I don't think that they will build something that will be ugly, because who would rent it? Who would buy it? They have a great financial incentive not to make the neighbors upset, to try to keep it as least intrusive as possible, because I'm sure they want to get along with their neighbors like I try to get along with my neighbors. That's what bothers me about regulation of real property. I'm not saying we shouldn't have planning. I'm saying we should give deference to a property owner's desires for their property. Who knows what's best for that property but the person who owns it, who pays the taxes, who defends the lawsuits, who maintains it apparently with her own bare hands? That's what bothers me. And this notion that traffic is somehow bad. Traffic is a good problem to have. It means people want to be here, it means population is coming here. Yes, we do have traffic problems. I'm not denying that, but I'm saying traffic is a good sign. People want that. If there's more traffic by that property, probably all the property values are going up for some purpose. That should benefit the neighborhood to some degree. And I realize, well, I live next door to Razorback Stadium. Six days a year these days, I have lots of traffic in front of my house. I realized that when I bought the property. I'm not complaining about it. I celebrate it, and I, if I want to put up a political sign, more people see my political sign. So I think the traffic adds value to my property. And I think traffic would add value to anybody's property for that purpose. I support the applicant's efforts.
Okay, thank you, John. Anybody else have any final comments? Yes, Sarah?
This has been a really tough decision for me, because, you know, I don't think necessarily that adding a few more units where they're trying to put them would be a bad thing. You know, I tried to evaluate this in terms of our 2030 city plan. You know, it says that making appropriate infill and revitalization are highest priorities, and this is definitely a central site, I think, about, you know, if we're building this livable transportation network, how could people walk or bike to the site? And right now, there's not really any sidewalks along North Gregg Avenue, or at least not continuous ones, in order to access goods and services. But, you know, you could bike over to the Skull Creek Trail system. I'm really split 50/50, and so generally in this, in this sort of situation, I'm going to go with the staff and the Planning Commission's recommendation, because I just don't see a compelling reason to overrule them, so I'm going to take their professional advice and vote against the rezoning. But, you know, recognizing that they still would be able to build an accessory dwelling unit in the backyard or a duplex, they could do a conditional use permit, so I do still think that they've got some options, and I'm not opposed necessarily to seeing something happen with that backyard, but I don't think that the current proposal is the right one at this time. So that's where I'm standing on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, if there's not any other discussion, then it's time to vote. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Latour.
Before I cast the wrong vote...
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If I say yes, I'm voting for the applicant's proposal, correct?
For the rezoning.
Yes. Yes, you are.
My answer is yes.
Long.
No.
Gray.
No.
Marsh.
No.
Kenyon.
No.
Tennant.
Yes.
Okay.
The ordinance fails on that vote.
Okay, thank you all. All right, number two. An ordinance to repeal and replace Title V Public Works Article III Discharge and Pretreatment Regulations to amend 51.137 monthly sewer rates to amend 51.138 definitions pertaining to water and sewer rates and to amend 51.999 penalty and to amend 10.99 general penalty of the Fayetteville Code. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Yes.
An ordinance to repeal and replace Title V of Public Works Article III Discharge and Pretreatment Regulations to amend Section 51.137 monthly sewer rates, to amend 51.138 definitions pertaining to water and sewer rates, to amend Section 51.999 penalty, and to amend Section 10.99 general penalty of the Fayetteville Code. As we explained last time, we need a little bit of time to have the notice out and have the public hearing, which will be scheduled for the next meeting. I don't know if Tim wants to add anything else, but if, after that, we still need to leave this on the second reading, so we can have the third and final reading at our next meeting.
Okay, so we want to hold it right here then?
We do need to do that. I don't know whether Tim has...
Yeah, Tim, do you have anything to add?
I just was here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is there any questions from the council? We'll leave it right here. Everybody good?
We have published the notice, but we're waiting for time to run, and the special meeting, I mean, special hearing will be at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Are we going to, I'll take a little public comment on this. If anybody wants to address this on this, otherwise, we're going to hold it and come back again. Everybody good? All right, let's go to number three. An ordinance to enact Article III Procedure to exercise initiative and referendum rights of Chapter 36 Elections and to the Fayetteville Code to clarify the proper procedure for the citizens' right, initiative, and referendum.
If I may?
Sure.
Mayor, we had a request to table this until March 17th. I would ask that we do that and table this until March 17th. We're going to have an ordinance review meeting on February 18th, and this will be the only item on that agenda. As chairman of that committee, I assure the public that they'll have ample time to make public comments at that meeting if they so choose. We will also do our due diligence, and if there's any suggestions to be made, do it at that time, and that will give us about a month to work with Kit and the staff and have an item that we can look at. I would rather, I would ask the council that we table it and not read it a second time, just because I think we could table it without having a second reading, and that would give us time after ordinance review to make our suggestions, and then if we table it till March 17th, that would give us the second and third reading at that point to allow public plenty of time to look at the finalized documents and make any suggestions or comments that they would like to do. It would also give the council time. I don't think there's a hurry. So I support tabling this till March 17th. I would just like to table it without moving to the second reading if anyone else is in agreement with that.
I second that motion.
Okay, what's everybody's thoughts, everybody?
I agree.
Okay, all right, so we're going to...
Well, we need a vote, Mayor.
Well, I'm just trying to get it right in my head here, what we need to do. So when's the ordinance review?
February 18th.
Okay.
I sent out a memo today suggesting that we wait until, really, a month after that to give us plenty of time to get it on the regular agenda for any changes or suggestions that the ordinance review committee might make.
So it's my understanding we want to table this until March 17th, correct?
That's correct, you're right.
Correct.
Everybody got that? Okay. Any final comments on this?
We do need to call the row, is that right?
I will take some public comment if somebody just like to address it, but we want to table this until March 17th. Okay? All right. All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business. Number one. An ordinance for zoning that properly described rezoning petition RZN 14-4882 for approximately 21.63 acres located on the east side of Rupert Road, north of Boys and Girls Club from R PZD Residential Plan Zoning District R PZD 06-1884, West Side Village to NS Neighborhood Services. Kit?
It ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RPZD Residential Plan Zoning District RPZD 06-1884, West Side Village, to Neighborhood Services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached or to and made a part hereof. Section Two, that the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Chairman.
The staff initiated rezoning of a property that was formally approved for development in 2006 called West Side Village. It's about a little under 22 acres north of the Boys and Girls Club in West Fayetteville on Rupert Road. The zoning currently is a residential plan zoning district, however, that zoning has expired, so there's no development or zoning rights on the property. The property is currently undeveloped with the exception of some driveways and parking areas that were originally constructed but never completed. The future land use plan in this area designates the site as a complete neighborhood plan. It was part of the Weddington Corridor Master Plan, and the proposed zoning, which is Neighborhood Services, would allow for a mixture of uses, primarily residential, but also some small-scale commercial uses, office uses, and other supporting services. We feel like the property, zoning of this property would be compatible with surrounding land uses, including, as I mentioned, the Boys and Girls Club, Ozarks Electric, which is a light industrial type use to the north and east. Across Rupert Road, the land is entirely single-family and two-family residential, with the density of around 10 units per acre, which is what Neighborhood Services also allows, and staff is supportive, obviously, as we initiated the request, and the Planning Commission voted nine to zero in favor of this rezoning as well.
Okay. What questions do we have? Jeremy on this from the council? Anything? Okay. Do we have any public? Oh, I suppose is the applicant here, would they like to make a few? Is there a...
Staff is the applicant in this case. We initiated, we did contact the property owner, so...
All right. Is there any public comment on this? Yes.
Valerie Van Der, I live off of Fieldstone. I just really have some questions, because I saw there was, like, starting to be some construction there, so I was thinking they were going to build what they had planned. I didn't see any notice that there was going to be changes there, so I don't know if the residents in that area had significant notice that there was going to be a change. Like I said, I do go down there occasionally, but I didn't see a sign that there was going to be, it was going to be on the Planning Commission. And once I saw this on the agenda, I went back, and there was definitely no sign, so I don't know if you guys had it there and took it down. I don't know. But, I was just really interested what the Neighborhood Services were. What can they build there? Is there going to be, like, a gas station? Is it going to be, like, really high traffic? Because it is kind of in a residential area, although they are next to a fire station, so I can't really, you know, tell them, you know, it's going to be a lot of noise, so if they suffer through the fire station, I'm pretty sure that they can suffer through the high traffic. So, what is exactly the Neighborhood Services? Is there, like, gas stations? Or is it just offices, doctor's offices?
Chairman.
And I, I mean, yeah.
So, Neighborhood Services allows for a number of primarily residential uses, but it also allows for what we call limited business. Limited business is small scale, so 3,000 to 5,000 square feet of offices, cafes, coffee shops, strike cleaners. It does not allow gas stations.
Okay, that's...
Does not allow, like, larger-scale commercial uses. It's really pretty limited, and so that was the intent there, because there's not a lot of commercial activity right there in the middle of the block between Rupert.
Yeah, well, I can see, like, small, smaller.
And to your first question, what we do on notification is just like, we treat ourselves like a normal applicant, so we obviously notify the property owner, and there's a letter in the packet showing that. We also notify any adjacent property owner, so those directly adjacent to the site.
Like I said, they live next to a fire station.
Right, exactly. And then a sign goes up before Planning Commission.
I was wondering about, because I just, like, I don't recall seeing that sign there, so I just want to make sure they had noticed. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else I'd like to address on this? Yes, I'm sorry.
If it's all right with the council and planning staff, if there's no hurry on this, I'd like to hold it until after the next Ward Four meeting, so that we can take some comment. I know Rupert Road, Rupert Road Property Owners Association is very active in the ward, so if that's all right, I'd like...
So, you just want to hold it right here, Alan?
If we could. That'd be wonderful.
I'm good.
I'd like to thank the staff for bringing this forward. I've been concerned about, there are several properties around town that have expired PZDs, which means that the property owner cannot build anything or develop their property in any way, and that's why I've asked the planning department to look, and when they find one of those with an expired PZD, they recommend what they believe would be the best zoning, sometimes in conjunction with the owner, but sometimes the owner doesn't make any recommendations, and so they decide themselves what would be best and most compatible with that neighborhood, and I appreciate them coming forward and doing that.
Okay. So, we'll hold this one right here.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, number two.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was actually going to ask if we could table it until the March 3rd meeting. That's when the next, that's the first meeting after the next Ward Four meeting.
Okay. So, you want to table until March 3rd.
Why did you want to table it?
The Ward Four meeting is the 23rd of this month. That'd be the meeting...
That would be the next meeting, right?
Yeah, that's the first City Council meeting after that.
Okay, I take that as a motion to table.
Yes, that is a motion.
Second.
Motion is second to table until the March 3rd City Council meeting. Any comments from the council on this?
Well, this is an expired PZD, right?
It's been sitting there like this for eight years, so there's no problem waiting for months.
That's what I'm saying. So, another month.
I'm good.
The only thing I might add, and it certainly supported it, like Jeremy said, table it as long as you'd like, based on how long we've been going, but remember, these are ordinances that each go one progressive reading for each meeting, so just by leaving it on a reading, it will not do any further action. You're on your very first reading of it tonight, so by the time you get to the date past the Ward meeting, rather than having to waive three readings or multiple readings, you would be at your third reading.
Okay, we have motion second anyway, so we're going to need to vote on this anyhow. So, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
No.
Marsh.
No.
Kenyon.
No.
Tannet.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll leave it right...
Well, right, you could vote if you wanted to, Mayor. It requires a majority of the voting members for an internal motion like this, and it's three to three.
I'm not going to vote.
Okay, so it's left on the first...
Okay. All right, number two. An ordinance for zoning that properly described rezoning petition RZN 14-4883 for approximately 93.04 acres located at Highway 112, north of Truckers Drive from R PZD 05-1796, Residential Plan Zoning District Park West to RSF 8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre, and CS Community Services. Kit?
It ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RPZD 05-1796 Residential Planning Zone, Zoning District Park West to RSF 8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre, and Community Services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached or to and made a part hereof. And Section Two, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Okay. Chairman.
This is another expired PZD that was also approved in 2006. It was also a residential plan zoning district, a mixed-use project, very large project, over 100 acres with quite a few different uses. That project, as I mentioned, has expired. No, nothing was ever developed on this particular one. It's located along Highway 112, between 112 and Dean Solomon Road, north of Sam's Club area, just south of the Van Ash Extension that the city's currently constructing. Two parcels on the property have actually already been rezoned within the last six months or so. There's one on which churches currently being constructed that was zoned Community Services, and a second was rezoned, I think, a meeting or two ago, very recently, north of Truckers Drive. This remaining piece of the property, staff, again, initiated a rezoning request, a little over 33 acres. We're requesting to rezone RSF 8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre, in the balance of the PZD, about around 60 acres, to Community Services. And there's a map, I don't have the page numbers on here, so sorry, but there's a map in your packet that shows the different uses and different zoning proposed in that application. Staff, of course, is supportive of this zoning designation. There's actually two future land use plan designations on this site, residential neighborhood area and city neighborhood area, and if you'll notice, the residential neighborhood area is more to the west, which is more single-family, gets into pretty rural, actually, land uses in that far western side, with some neighborhoods to the north as well. Along Highway 112 is not developed commercially at this time, other than the drive-in movie theater and a restaurant. However, with the addition of Van Ash Extension and future plans for Highway 112, we do fully anticipate that this area will see increased interest for the viability of probably commercial or mixed-use development, and so we're simply attempting to plan for that and be proactive with the zoning to allow for those types of uses, which they currently do not. So, staff is supportive of this request. Planning Commission voted nine to zero, and we went through the same notification process as well with this particular application.
Okay. What questions do we have from the council for, Chairman? Sorry, ma'am.
Sorry. Jeremy, I was just curious. So, the Van Ash Extension at that point, that's still within the box, right?
It is, so...
Yes, it is.
Rupert is further west.
Correct. Van Ash is probably a quarter, maybe a third of a mile to the north, and it connects up to Highway 112, which will be a T intersection instead of the sort of S curve that you have now, and that continues along 112 until it goes back toward the north, and then it goes west along, I've forgotten the name of the road there, but that's actually in the county or in that portion.
Well, I guess, just, you know, if we're thinking about for future transit planning and, you know, how we're going to hopefully run some transit lines around the perimeter of the box, it just seems like the area that you've designated for RSF 8, should that, why did you make it such a low-intensity use? It seems like that might be a better fit for something that might be more high-intensity.
I think part of it is geography, so there's quite a bit of terrain there. If you drive 112 here, there's quite a bit of elevation gain and loss, it's very hilly through there, and I think also there's some well-established single-family residential neighborhoods that we don't see changing. Some of them are brand-new, still building out. Directly across the street, for instance, there's a subdivision that's still under construction, and so the council's made some land use decisions in that area that we felt needed to be honored, so this is a higher intensity, higher density, I guess, use than that, which is RSF 4. But, we're really trying to concentrate some of those mixture of uses, still within walking distance through the neighborhood, but more along the area where the highway is and where we see Van Ash connecting up to the northeast part of town, north part of town, over along Greg and the mall and that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll open up some public comment on this. On up, Aubrey.
In 2007, I walked over a great part of that property and that whole area, north of Sam's and west of the 112, all the way over to the golf course and all those things. Wilson Springs, wildlife area, nature area, is immediately downstream from everything that happens on land there and even across the street uphill toward the mall. So, this is probably, much of it is a critical groundwater recharge area for the headwaters of the Illinois River. So, when we were there in 2007, I have that mass of pictures on Flickr set, I posted them today, a link to that, hoping some people would see it. But, it's wetland. It's seasonal wetland. We were out there looking at the little daughters in the stream that are rare, and crawfish that are endemic to the area. Joe Neal was there, and he was, well, he's long been concerned about the Wilson Springs area. Gosh, when I was young, I think, almost, but anyhow, this, I think, should be tabled, and before you do a mass zoning or a parcel that big, you should have Corps of Engineers actually delineate the significant portions of wetland, those streams through it, and, you know, it's wonderful the PZD never got done, because it wouldn't have been necessarily done that well, but in 2006 and '07, we were still, I think, having Corps of Engineers delineation as part of the Planning Commission's material to see, and you guys probably had access to it. But, anyway, I think that without that kind of knowledge, that kind of zoning that would allow 24, what is it, RMF 24, single-family, RMF 24 is quarter acre, telling you again, Jeremy, what we did allow on it.
This particular request is for RSF 8, which is residential single-family, eight units per acre, and that's in the northwest corner of the site. Portions of the property have already been zoned multifamily, so that's already existing, and then Community Services would be the other zone, the 59 acres along 112 and coin west along the Collector Street.
So, on, near the northwest corner of it, I remember one item, there was a home that had springs coming up underneath it, blowing out. It's wonderful property. I'd love for everybody to get to see all the land before it's rezoned and understand what it stands for and what it can mean in the future if it's protected. And the fact that we're not, you know, hearing a Corps of Engineer report on the, on parcels that are being rezoned and allowed to be developed is a step way back from 20 years ago or more, when that was done routinely. So, please, at least give another two weeks for anybody else who might be interested to come speak about it. It was kind of a surprise to me. I'd forgotten it was, that was happening till this morning, when I looked at your agenda on the internet and said, oh, well, we need to be sure it's considered, because once you zone it, it's very hard then without a PZD that makes plans or a subdivision set up that requires it. Because you see these lots in South Fayetteville and many other areas where people are buying property or planning to buy it, and they come in and ask to have it zoned and even lot splits on it, and then, guess what? There's no protection of the tree canopy on those lots. There's no water... There's no protection of the tree canopy on those lots, there's no watershed protection, because when you have eight houses on an acre, there's not likely to be any place left of the natural soil where water can soak in and be filtered through to the watershed. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. So y'all want to leave this on, and it'll be time for y'all to run to your board meeting? Everybody good? All right, let's leave it right here. Okay, number three. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4916 for approximately .32 acres located at 957 Ray Avenue from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to NSS Neighborhood Services. Kit?
Beed ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zoning classification of the following described property from residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to Neighborhood Services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Jeremy? This is a request from an applicant to rezone a property near the southeast corner of Huntsville Road and Ray Avenue, directly east of the property come-and-go bought from the city within the last year. It contains about a 2,000-square-foot office building constructed in around 1970. The current zoning of the property is RMF 24, which allows for multifamily use but not necessarily office use. In our research, we found that the property was, at one point, previously zoned C1, which is our neighborhood commercial zoning designation, and we have some of that research in the, in the application there, the packet for you. Regardless, the current zoning of the property is RMF 24, it's always been utilized as an office from what we can tell, and that's what the applicant would like to continue utilizing it for, and so to bring that use into conformity, we recommended the applicant applied for the Neighborhood Services designation, which, like we talked about on Rupel Road, is a zoning designation that allows for primarily single-family, two-family uses, but it also allows for low-intensity, smaller, non-residential uses. So this close to Huntsville Road, we felt comfortable recommending this application and felt it would be compatible with the neighborhood. Planning Commission agreed with that of the vote of nine to zero.
Any questions?
They want to bring to your attention, the applicant called us this afternoon, is sick with the flu, I believe, so could not be present tonight, so you're all welcome to leave it on this reading, or if you're comfortable approving it, the applicant doesn't have to be here for, for those applications, but I just wanted to let you, let you be aware of that.
My Chris go on and move it.
Okay. A motion to second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you can vote to approve this.
I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay, that passes then. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4916 for approximately a third of an acre, located at 956 Ray Avenue, from residential multifamily, 24 units per acre, to Neighborhood Services. The only other thing that you might want to consider to have the applicant here is the fact that the current structure would be incompatible with Neighborhood Services in that it's not built to the build-to zone. Of course, we've changed the requirements for the current zoning, which also requires the structure in RMF 24 to also be close to the road, but sometimes it's good to be able to advise the applicant in person to make sure that they realize what's happening. And of course, I think, Jeremy, they've probably been advised that way by your office anyway, but.
We did, and we actually looked at a number, C1, which is another option for this applicant, would also create a non-conforming structure with their setbacks, and so there's really not a perfect zoning district to bring both the use and the structure into compliance. We felt the use was most important, because the Board of Adjustment, for instance, cannot grant a use variance, they can grant an existing non-conforming structure variance for a, for a setback, so we, our staff did advise the applicant of that, so they're aware.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So just to clarify, it's my understanding that if we voted for this, then they would go to the Board of Adjustments?
If, if they, if they chose to do so, they don't have to, it's an existing structure, but they could, certainly.
They wouldn't have to, but they could.
It would be an existing non-conforming structure if they, if they did not, otherwise they could have it recognized, and then it would be completely legal and conforming.
And if they're gonna use it as an office, they couldn't get that kind of relief from the Board of Adjustment, which you can for not having it in the build-to zone.
Right.
Okay, let me take some public comments. Any public comment on this? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third reading?
Second.
A motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Tenet?
No.
That fails to what's left on the second reading.
All right. Okay, number four, RPZD 14-4924, South Shallow Drive, Hawkins House at Shallow Village, an ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4924 for approximately 10.74 acres located at South Shallow Drive from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to RPZD 14-4924 residential plan zoning district Hawkins House. Kit?
Beed ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zoning classification of the following described property from residential multifamily, 24 units per acre, to RPZD 14-4924 residential plan zoning district Hawkins House, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section Two, that the change in zoning classification is based upon the master plan depicted in the PZD booklet and Platts as submitted and term appropriate and approved by the City Council. Section Three, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Okay, Jeremy?
This property is located on the west side of I-49, approximately a half-mile of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The Planning Commission approved a large-scale development on the property back in 2007 for the development of almost 200 multifamily dwelling units with 20, 20 separate buildings. It's currently zoned RMF 24, allowing for up to 24 units per acre. All of the interior private streets and utility lines were constructed at that time, however, only five of the buildings were actually completed. These are the red buildings that you see on the, on the west side of I-49. You also see currently several buildings under construction. This is the large-scale development that was recently approved in this past year for five new apartment buildings, containing 46 new residential units that will look similar to the others, they're under construction currently. That part of the construction and the remaining property are the subject of this proposal, which is a residential plan zoning district. The Planning Commission has already approved a preliminary plat, subject to this rezoning approval by the City Council. The primary reason for that is to allow for some of the units to be sold as lots, and so with a large-scale development, you usually see one large lot with multiple buildings on it that's part of the property, which is really utilized as apartments. What they like to do is offer two other types of, for sale properties, one of which you could buy as a condo, but also be able to split some of the buildings out as lots, you could actually buy an individual townhome if you so chose. Staff is supportive of that request, it really doesn't change anything about the development in and of itself, it's just another mechanism to allow for entry into this type of product. So Planning Commission forwarded this item to the City Council with a recommendation for approval of the zoning with a vote of nine to zero, and as I mentioned, the preliminary plat, which is the development request, was already approved by the Planning Commission and subject to your approval of this zoning.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this, council? Okay, what public comment do we have on this one? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4924 for approximately 10.74 acres, located at South Shallow Drive from residential multifamily, 24 units per acre, to RPZD 14-4924 Hawkins House.
If we suspend the rules and go to the third reading?
Second.
A motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 14-4924 for approximately 10.74 acres, located at South Shallow Drive from residential multifamily, 24 units per acre, to residential plan zoning district 14-4924 Hawkins House.
Okay, any final comments from the council on this? Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay, number five. Resolution to amend the Fayetteville Alternative Transportation and Trails Master Plan by clarifying that separated bicycle and pedestrian trails are planned for the Interstate 49 interchange to Garland Avenue, Highway 112, Weddington Drive, Highway 16, and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Highway 62, and to amend the master street plan to add a typical cross-section for separated bicycle and pedestrian trails. Kit?
This resolution actually needs to be amended by the document that was handed out tonight, and I'll, I think Chris Brown can explain why, but after he explains it, then I would like, or Jeremy, or Dawn, whoever wants to explain it, and then we'll need a motion to amend this resolution and also the exhibits.
Mr. Mayor, I'll explain the, the request first and then the reason for the, the passed-out, updated version. As you all know, the city has been in communication with the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department, or AHTD, for quite some time on their conceptual designs for all of the, almost all the interchanges, not the Cato Springs interchange, but all the other interchanges within Fayetteville as part of their improvement program along all of the I-49 corridor in northwest Arkansas. Back in April, I believe, the City Council voted to approve a resolution supporting, several comments actually were included, but one of the comments was to support the inclusion of separated bicycle and pedestrian trail facilities as opposed to proposed bike lanes. The reason the bike lanes were there in the first place is that the HTD does have a policy of following a city's master street plan essentially, and include, include construction of bicycle pedestrian facilities if it is on an adopted master plan. If you don't have it on an adopted master plan, they don't include it, so certainly grateful for them for doing that, however, at all of the interchanges where it's high traffic, a lot of turning movements, some of these areas will have six or eight lanes because of the high volume, the bicycle lanes within traffic, we felt was not the safest provision of those facilities, and so our staff got together and recommended essentially providing trails in this area, so separated facilities, and there's a cross-section in your, in your packets showing those, those facilities. In all of these cases, it would connect up to existing trails, because as you all know, we have very limited crossings of I-49, and so we have to utilize these interchanges, it's really the only way we have to get across to connect west Fayetteville and the rest of Fayetteville, and so that was the important component of that. We received word back on the first interchange of, of all of them, that that was not going to be something they could support, because their policy states essentially they follow the adopted master plan, and our adopted master plan currently essentially states that we have on, on-street linkages, which we interpret as many different things, it can be bicycle lanes, it can be cycle tracks, it could be separated pedestrian and trail facilities, or multi-use trails combined. So we decided it was important enough to go down and meet with the, the Director of Arkansas and State Highway Department, Highway and Transportation Department and their staff. We did so a couple of weeks ago and received some feedback that really the best opportunity for them to still be able to follow their policy would be for us to clarify ours, and so that's what we brought to you, is a clarification of what we are meaning when we state on-street linkages or pedestrian and bicycle facilities are necessary in this area. So what we've done is included two amendments, one is to our master alternative transportation trails master plan, or the FAT plan as it's known, and also our master street plan to clarify that these are all, interchanges are all have trail linkages, and we want to ensure that the highway department knows that and it's clear that we prefer the separated facilities as the safest alternative for that type of transportation and recreational use. It, it does deserve to be, to be said that we're right in the middle of going out, preparing an RFQ for a master transportation plan, and so all of these interchanges and all of our street cross-sections would be, will be looked at over the next year, the time is of the essence on this one, so we felt like we needed to bring it to you. The highway department, Highway and Transportation Department indicated that they're at 60% completion on drawings, at least on the Highway 112 interchange, and so we wanted to make sure they got this. If it's approved and signed, we'll ship it immediately to Little Rock and make sure they have that, so they can consider it in their designs. We've already done that, by the way, we've already sent them the cross-section that we hope will be approved, just to get their feedback, and thus the reason for the alternative packet that you have tonight, they gave us some feedback on that, and so we've clarified that even further for their use, really not necessarily the cross-section, but how the map reads, showing the, the limited areas where this applies at the interchanges, and Chris might be able to explain any of those in detail if you have a question specifically about those, but essentially what we're trying to do is show that these are part of our multi-use trail network, and we support and encourage and prefer as the safest, and we believe the most, what will be the most used, utilized routes would be separated pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Okay, what questions do we have?
Chris is ready, aren't you, Chris?
Okay.
If there are no questions, then I would ask you all to make, someone to make a motion to amend the current, the resolution that was originally handed out to the amended resolution that was handed out tonight, that is in the paper form in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, now to the resolution is ho, amended resolution.
Yeah, let me, let me ask this, now Jeremy, did this include the different exhibits also? And so we're understanding that that motion was also included, the new resolution and the new exhibits to the resolution?
That's correct, everything that's stapled to your packet there, the new exhibits.
Everybody good? I'll take a little public comment on this, if anybody has, wants to address on this. Come on up, Aubrey.
Aubrey Shepherd, again, please, the toast, trails, separated trails for people and, and on bicycles and walking, on every bridge and every major intersection you can, and I'm sure there'll be more in the future that will require those. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion to second to pass the resolution?
Yes.
We did? Have we done that yet, I'm sorry?
No, no, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second to pass the amended resolution. Any final comments on this?
I'd just like to say thank you to the staff for catching this and being so quick to act, this is so important. I regularly use the Mount Comfort Underpass on my bicycle, and even as an experienced cyclist, it's terrifying, it's hard to see and to be seen by the cars, there's people going in a lot of different directions, so it, you know, I try to judge the safety or the effectiveness of our trail system by the six to 60 metric, which is, you know, would a six-year-old be, be safe on it, or a 60-year-old be safe on it, and, and without that barrier there, I don't think they would be, so this is absolutely essential, and thank you for putting this together.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business for tonight, what's now, yes?
Before we conclude our business, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the Trumpus appeal.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a reconsideration of the Trumpus. We go back to that, all right?
I mean, before I get into, I'd just like to say that.
I mean, before I get into, I'd just like to say that, I was just as torn as Sarah was on this. I, looking at the zoning, I really do think it's compatible. I mean, it's, it's surrounded on two sides by that type zoning they're looking for, so I, you know, about a minute after I voted, I regretted voting that way, so...
That's fine. That's fine. What do we, anybody got anything else they want to say on it? All right, let us begin again.
Well, this, the first thing will be a vote whether or not to reconsider.
All right. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
No.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, so the item is now back on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So, is there any final comments on this?
Mayor, what was our vote?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Okay.
All righty, yes, Mark.
I just want to emphasize that this was also tough for me, because I do look at the activity here, and it was out of respect and true concern for the neighborhood that is currently there, that is primarily single-family, that they wanted the protection offered by the suggestion of the staff and the Planning Commission, and then also in consideration of the traffic patterns that are in that area.
Okay, anything else? Yep?
I just think it'd be important to note that if, if we don't approve what they're looking for, they're talking about coming back with a duplex instead of a triplex, so it'd just be one additional unit. And really, there's one, only one adjacent property with, with a housing unit on it that's not multifamily. So, that, that's why I've, I've changed my mind on that, and I think that it would be suited for multifamily.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
No.
Tenet?
Yes.
That fails on your, Mr. Mayor, because it requires five or more votes to pass an ordinance.
Okay. Now, that concludes our business. What announcements do we have?
We have quite a number of positions opens on boards and commissions, so I would encourage our constituents all out through the city to go on the website and look for those places, because we would love to have you serving in a, on a board or commission in our city.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you all very much. We're adjourned.